All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting for May 3rd. We are still in ordinance 1,000, which allows for hybrid council meetings. I've got council member Ken Saunders and his now famous ceiling fan on Zoom. And all other council members present and accounted for. With that, I've asked council member Terry Williams if she'd lead us in invocation and pledge allegiance.
Thank you, have a good Father, for bringing us here safely, protecting us, and keeping us in your care. We appreciate it, Lord, and thank you that we see COVID numbers going down, and that you have carried us through this season and taken care of all of us, and kept us healthy and safe. Lord, we just ask that you be with us tonight as we take care of the city's business, take care of our first responders and our police officers, Father, and Lord, we just ask you for wisdom. We ask you, Lord, for good conversation, and we ask you, Lord, to lead us in everything we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Outstanding. I have, we'll move on now to special guests and announcements, and the very first special guest is State Representative Mark Lowery to give us a little bit of an update on the legislative session.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak with you. Typically, in legislative session, I come earlier in the session, but I was afraid if I came earlier in the session, you would ask me to do something about pit bulls. And yeah, I didn't, I just didn't want to dive into the middle of that one. But no, seriously, it's been a, as you can imagine, a very interesting legislative session. It's one of the longest that we've had in recent memory, I think probably the longest. A lot of that was because of the many of the COVID restrictions. We, our committee meetings met mornings and afternoons, and then we also were out a week because of the snow. So it's a pretty effective legislative session, and so I guess I better get started to talk about the 2,000 bills that we passed. Now, I don't know what the number was, but I did want to talk to you about or update you on a few of the bills that are specific to Maumell and the northwest Plaski County area. The first one being, you have a copy of it, very proud of, is Act 655 of 2021. It clarifies the municipal police sick leave and the accrual that can take place. As you're well aware, that's been an issue that was brought to your attention, that it was going to take state law to be able to pass this, to be able to allow municipal police officers to accrue more sick leave based on a different workday. Mayor Norris came up to the legislature, worked with the municipal league. He used his powers of persuasion with them because they were at first opposed to the bill because it, they were getting feedback from other municipal police chiefs that they did not want to be locked into having to do the same thing. So we just put put language in there that said that if you want to change your accrual process or your formula, that you could do so by ordinance. So I'm sure that that's something that will be coming before you soon. Another issue that is specific to Maumell, or at least to the Charter School, which I know many of you are very interested in. It was identified about three to four years ago. The Maumell Charter School and doing their annual event, their fundraising event where tickets are sold and they and they have all the different, out on the soccer field, that they were having to pay sales tax on the sales. And so the Arkansas Public School Resource Center worked with me first, trying to get a an opinion from DFA that that was wrong, that they should not have been collecting sales tax. Their opinion came back to us that, well, the law actually exempts public school districts, but not public schools. As you know, charter schools are not considered a school district. Attempted in the last session, the 19 session, to introduce legislation, did introduce legislation, but never got a hearing on that. Revenue and tax bills have to kind of get the stamp of approval from the governor, from the the joint budget chairs to make sure that they are not going to cost the state too much in revenue, even if it's the right thing to do to clarify an exemption. This time, we did get it heard, and the interesting part about it is in the presentations or Revenue and Tax Committee, I was told, this is just for a presentation, Representative Lowery, we're not going to put it up for a vote. It wasn't very long before members started asking the representative from the Department of Finance and Administration, how do you know what this fiscal impact is? Have you been collecting this money from PTOs and PTAs? And they said, well, actually, we don't have any history of collecting. Of course, we know that they did collect from the Maumell Charter School. Once the members peppered the DFA about their revenue impact, the chairman of the committee, Representative Joe Jett, said, well, I can see where this is going, and we're going to recommend this bill on, and I want to be a co-sponsor on this. So we now have a bill which is Act 873. It amends the sales tax laws for public school special events, and this applies not just to charter schools, but also to all public schools. Even though they showed that there is a revenue impact on the state, we believe that that was inaccurate because it's actually, it's a net issue in terms of tax revenue because in many cases, the PTO is going to, say, Sam's or Walmart. They're buying, say, they're selling cookies. They're buying the cookie dough. They're buying all the materials, and they're paying sales tax on that. And so any sales tax that's lost in the actual generation or the sale actually is made up, and so it's not a net loss. So that's, I think that's really exciting. I know Rob McGill is very excited at the Charter School that they're going to be able to carry on this, this annual activity. Act 877, I'm sure some of you remember the the storm, the snowstorm effect on electricity. Maumell was very fortunate in that we had just a very short period of time, at least my neighborhood did, your neighborhood did, I think, just one evening. But it did prompt a bill, Act 877 of 2021, an act to require electric utilities to have an emergency plan in place for individuals with disabilities or the elderly during certain weather events, and to also require the electric utility to directly notify local governments of any planned power outages. Now, I know the mayor may have received those notices. I know I received a notice, but this would require that if there are going to be outages, planned outages because of brownouts or because of power consumption exceeding capacity, that they would notify the city officials first. And so you would have a heads up before your constituents start calling you on their cell phones going, what in the world's happening here? So that bill passed, and actually, there was no opposition from Entergy on that. Act 1072 is a bill that, that I sponsored, registration of roofing contractors. During storm events, a lot of people are really taken advantage of by what are called storm chasers, these roofing companies that maybe come in from out of state. They tell the homeowner, listen, I'll, I'll do, I'll do a great deal for you. As a matter of fact, it's going to be such a great deal. You may not even want to go through your insurance company. But, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need some, a down payment to go buy the materials because we're just doing this job to job. And so the homeowner, usually an elderly homeowner, says, okay, well, so gives him $1,000, and the roofing, the roofers never come back. Well, this law requires registration of any company that is going to be doing roofing. They have to have a $15,000 bond, which really only costs them $150 a year. But it allows the contractor's licensing board to know who these contractors are, these roofing contractors. Now, the truth is, and this was part of the resistance to the bill initially, was that bad actors are going to be bad actors. They're probably not going to register. But at least in a storm event, the contractor's licensing board can notify city officials, can put the word out, the chambers of commerce, whatever entity, to say, if you have someone come to you saying that they can fix your roof, here is where you can go to find out if they are registered with the state. So that gives us a little bit of extra protection for homeowners. And then the last bill I wanted to talk to you about, unfortunately, is not a bill, it's not an act, it is a bill. There was an attempt on my part, and Representative David Ray and Senator Mark Johnson, to open the Short Marche Road off of Wydough Crossing. As you know, the county judge, after having that open for almost two years, closed it. The problem there is the county judges have a, that's their, that's their authority. And so we try, I tried a bill that said, was very specific. Of course, you can't pass legislation that says, open Short Marche Road. But we did have language, and I know JP Paul Elliott's here, he helped support a resolution with the quorum court, saying that the judge should open it. The majority, I believe it was a super majority of the quorum court, supported that resolution, but the judge said no. The bill actually said that a county judge cannot close to public access a class five collector road, which is what that road is, within a quarter mile of an interchange with a major US highway. Pretty specific. But at least generic enough in the language that it did, it was not considered local legislation. We also hoped that the resistance from county judges would be, would be buffered because we felt like that probably would only affect maybe four or five county judges statewide. But the entire power of the county judges came down on us. And I did get to present it, and you might have seen the newspaper article that was generated by it, and one thing that we did get out of it was Judge Hyde conceding that there is a possibility that someday that road could be reopened. Now, we're probably talking about a 10-year, you know, 10-year process or more. But at least that's more than he's ever said before. So anyway, that's just a summary. There was a whole lot more that went on, but I appreciate the opportunity to just once again represent you and to come to you and let you know some of the things that we did do to benefit this area specifically. And I'm, you know, free to answer any questions if I didn't exceed my five to seven minutes, Mr. Mayor.
I can't say I was keeping track, but again, Representative Lowery, I did want to thank you for working with us on Act 655. That was my first experience going down and testifying, and we had a false start, and it's quite hectic. You get used to the city. If anyone thinks that we move quickly or there's random turns and detours with the city, just go follow what's going on at the state legislature, and there's curveballs left and right. You don't know if you're testifying in one minute or next week or how that's going to work. So thank you for your help working with us on that.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, we will move right on to Justice of the Peace Paul Elliott. You can come on down. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Justice Elliott primarily for a grant that he was able to work with the county to get the city for the splash pad. Specifically, we were able to get with a grant secured through the county a a recycled plastic ADA picnic table that'll be installed out there. And so I just wanted to thank you for that and give you an opportunity to let us know what's going on in your world.
Well, there's one thing. And I'm happy to do it for Maumell. Everybody knows I'm not helping Maumell every which way I can, all I can. And like I said, I've got $1,000 trust, and now all quorum court members get $1,000 a year that we can do on a grant. So I made that charge this week, but I'm happy to do it. I have one other thing, and I'll get out of your way. I was, I didn't want to make a announcement real quick, because I was voted again in Washington DC to national quorum court public committee, please, I'm talking about public safety committee. I was voted vice chair for two more years in Washington DC. That's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. I don't have any. And again, thank you for working with the city to improve the community's playground splash pad there.
Yeah, like I said, I'm really glad I got that in there. Okay, I wonder will it be open? I just wanted to kind of ask.
Soon. It's actually functional right now. You can go out and get the water going, but they're still working on a few things. I think it's supposed to be by the end of May, and hopefully even before then.
Right. And next year, if you need something else, I'll give you another grant, get you another grant.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Elliott and Representative Lowery for all you do for Maumell and all you do for the state. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And with that, I want to move on to the employee of the month. And really quickly, y'all may recall that we're, seems like we're getting a employee of the month every two weeks now, and that's because when we went to fully virtual meetings, it just didn't feel like it would be rewarding enough to name employees of the month when they really didn't get to come and be forced to stand in front of the council to receive their award. The person that I am about to name began their employment in October and has been named employee of the month for October. And amusingly, this person was nominated before, but we wanted to wait and make sure that he was actually employed with the city for the month, that he was officially being given the employee of the month. So with that, the employee of the month for October is Jason Lyon. Come on down.
I don't know why we act like it's a reward to have to stand up here, but it seems like there's mostly friendly faces out there except for Paul. So here we go. I just want to read the proclamation, namely, Jason Lyon is the mayor's employee of the month for October 2020, and declaring May 7th, 2021 to be Jason Lyon Day in the city of Maumell. Whereas Jason Lyon started his employ with the city in October 2020, and having been with the city for a short time, has not only mastered the areas of responsibility given to him, but has proven to be a team player by his willingness to accept additional responsibilities. Whereas Mr. Lyon took on the task of managing an ongoing street luggage, street light outage issue around the city by utilizing C clip fix and reporting to Entergy directly, and has been able to reduce the average number of streetlight outages from over 100 to under 20 at any given time. Whereas Mr. Lyon has directly impacted the value proposition offered by the department to the community and applicants by taking on subdivision and site plan responsibilities, freeing up the director to manage growth and integration of the planning and permits department, and its merging and modernization of various processes. Whereas Mr. Lyon has gone above, that's a lot of words here. Whereas he's gone above his duties by bringing his knowledge of GIS and has created internal tools that are being used by city staff today and will be a valuable resource to the public in the future, opening up areas of growth in Maumell's technological future. Whereas Mr. Lyon has expertly integrated within the Department of Planning and Permits and actively promotes an atmosphere of collaboration and support among his colleagues. Now, therefore, I, Caleb Morris, Mayor of Maumell, do hereby declare Jason Lyon to be the mayor's employee of the month for October 2020, and hereby proclaim May 7th, 2021 to be Jason Lyon Day in the city of Maumell.
Want to give a speech, Tim? I don't know if we could have envisioned this back when we kind of merged code enforcement with planning and zoning and did some reshuffling and created a new position and eliminated a different position, but Jason has come in and been the perfect addition that really kind of has helped merge those two. It's a position that didn't exist before. It's almost as if we created the position for him, which wasn't quite the case, but he's just such a great fit for that department and everywhere that Scott Grubber is trying to take him. So thank you again, Jason. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the April 19th regular meeting minutes. Y'all have received a copy of that. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? Motion carries. I don't have any public comment cards, so we would normally be moving on to department reports. We had Doreen Mattis, Director of Human Resources, scheduled to come tonight, but she had another engagement, so we will postpone her report until next month. And with that, we'll move on to Planning Commission report, which would be Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, sir. Cut to the chase here and just say that everything was approved. Now, that being said, I'll dive off into some detail. They had some lot mergers in Osage Hills, basically combining four lots down into two larger lots. That was approved. That stays a planning commission. In terms of things that we'll be seeing here on the council, on tonight's agenda, we have ordinance 1033 and 1034. If you're familiar with the Carnahan Village residential subdivision that's gone in off of Club Manor, there has been a commercial, I'm sorry, there has been a lot available for sale in front of that, and the Planning Commission gave a due pass recommendation to the city council to change that from institutional to commercial, as well as to amend the zoning map from PCD to C2 Town Center. So those are both given a due pass recommendation. Moving on to what we'll see again tonight, Resolution 2021-11. This is in regards to the property that we just approved, the rezoning to PRD, I believe, over there across Maumell Boulevard. That was given a due pass recommendation for the preliminary plat, as well as the preliminary development plan, and we have that in our agenda tonight. Lastly, was a request for a approval of a plat for a new subdivision, Pinnacle Heights. This is going to be built to the north of Maumell Valley Estates and to the west of Ridgeland. This is actually in the county right now, but part of, it's been an interesting process to follow. A part of the approval of this was a contingency that they would ask for annexation into the city. So that is currently going through the process with the various powers that be. So, but that was approved pending annexation. So I suspect we will see that come up at some point. That's it.
That is correct. Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Really quickly on that issue of that area that's in the county, I had received some comments from folks who who were opposed to annexation and notified me of that back when the property was first listed for sale. I think it's important to note that with that area not being in the city, the city can't and probably doesn't want to just stop that property owner from being able to develop anything. And so as that property owner was coming to the city, we did what we could to try and make sure that it looked and felt like Maumell and wasn't a completely incompatible use, maybe something that you'd see out in the county. And so we, for example, we probably wouldn't have wanted a mobile home park to appear right there just because of the surrounding neighborhood and that sort of stuff. And with it, with it in the county, we were a little bit worried about what we'd get. The property owner's been accommodating, Mr. Grummer's worked with him and his staff to try and ensure that we had something going in that fit what, what we consider Maumell and would fit with the neighboring and abutting properties there. So that we didn't have a completely incompatible use. But y'all will be hearing more about that as annexation is proposed and submitted, as well as there's another property that is petitioning to annex into Maumell. Y'all will be hearing about that. With that said, we'll move on to procedural motion. I entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard a second. We've got a motion, a second to have all ordinances, resolutions read by title only. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. We'll move right on to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the third reading of ordinance 1028, amending the Maumell zoning map. Before we get to that reading, this was what I'm going to request that the city council table this until August 2nd, 2021. This was the rezoning of the area around the off of Commerce. The city is the applicant here, and we, and the city was applying to change that from a C3 down to a C2. One of the reasons we're asking for this to be tabled is one of the permissive uses by right in a C2 is R3. And so we're looking at possibly trying to amend or change that from R3 as a use by right to perhaps a conditional use, which would then give the city some ability to approve or not approve that particular R3. I think we're exploring a few other options to see if we can accommodate that transition between what is now PRD and not far away industrial. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'd entertain a motion to postpone this and/or to table this until August 2nd, 2021. I've got a couple motions and a couple seconds there. Is there any discussion on that? Go ahead.
If, I'm presuming that the city will bring forward something in regards to changing the code on that. Would that affect this particular ordinance in any way, or the ordinance that will be introduced later then passes? Can we come back to their reading on this, or does that affect ordinance 1028 in any way?
I'll let the city attorney opine as to whether that functionally changes this, but there is nothing in 1028 that we would anticipate changing. It would just be the sort of implication of what that means following from there. Madam City Attorney, do you have an opinion on that?
Since the ordinance would not have been passed until after the change in the code, assuming there is a change in the code, then it would become effective as affected by those changes.
Thank you. So I do have a motion, a second to postpone this until August 2nd. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? This will be on third reading at the August 2nd meeting. With that, we will move on to the third reading, ordinance 1029, amending multiple sections of the Maumell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1029, and ordinance amending multiple sections of the Maumell City Code to divine short-term rentals require business registrations and an accessory use permit for the short-term rental properties and for other purposes.
Thank you. You should have received on your table the, an updated 1029, which I believe just had some of the numbering corrected there in section one. So I'll go ahead and open this up for discussion. If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1029. I had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There is. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm kind of on the fence on this one. So I'd appreciate it if those are voting for or against, would kind of give your rationale so that perhaps I can make it my mind. I'm torn between, I know this is a hot item. perhaps I can make it my mind. I'm torn between, I know this is a hot item. I know that Fayetteville and Hot Springs, I think both adopted something here just in the last couple of weeks. Close. But anyway, so it's a hot item and also that I also believe in property rights, being able to do your own thing with your your properties. So so I'm kind of I'm torn. So I'd appreciate any input. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner.
Um, so in Councilmember Mosley, in regards to your question, Fayetteville did approve their version of the ordinance. Actually, the day after our council meeting last time on April the twentieth. However, their ordinance, which I understand ours was modeled quite a bit after theirs, they made a number of amendments to it. And one of those amendments was they increased the capacity that you could have in an Airbnb or a short-term rental. The formula that they are using is two people per bedroom plus two people. And I think they, I believe they actually put a cap on theirs as five bedrooms. So if you do the math on that, that'd be a cap of twelve, but they just they just leave it as two bedrooms plus two people. Hot Springs has been a little bit different. They have tried. They've been doing a number of different draft ordinances, and one of the ones that they were looking at initially, they were using three people per bedroom. And then they were also looking at follow me on this, one person per two hundred square feet of space in the house. So, you know, just for easy math, if it was a two thousand square foot house, that could be ten people. So they were using an either or formula. I think the latest draft that I saw from them, they have reduced that. And they're they're looking at doing the same model as what Fayetteville did, two per bedroom plus two. But one of the comments that came from their city manager on this was they're going to have a lot of pushback on that capacity because being a lake resort town, they have a lot of those bunk rooms, like I'd mentioned in previous weeks. And they were asking the same questions that I had asked is, are we going to really enforce how many people can sleep in a room? Are we going to check that? You know, so that was one of the things that they were doing. Little Rock, after the meeting last Monday, Little Rock's Planning Commission held a virtual workshop that I attended that next day, and they have their Planning Commission has taken the lead on designing their ordinance. They've had a number of different planning sessions, public hearings on theirs, and they're using the two per bedroom multiplier as well on their ordinance. So one thing that was interesting to me through all of this, I spent way more time studying short-term rental laws than I expected. But they, the from what I've seen, the Planning Commission has been very involved, and they've taken an approach of how are we going to enforce this and and build their law around that? They want to make sure that their processes are in place first before they do anything. The city of Little Rock is actually charging a five, well, there this is all proposed because they haven't approved it yet. But Little Rock is proposing a five hundred dollar per short-term rental application fee because they want code enforcement, fire departments and and to go out and check the facility. They're actually going to kind of treat it like you're registering a hotel or a motel. And they're going to require smoke alarms, fire extinguishers, exit plans and all that stuff. And so the the kind of the message I got from Little Rock is they they plan on hiring a person to administer this because they figure if they can get five hundred dollars in a fee, then, you know, they can bring on somebody full time that would go out and administer it. Little Mammell, we're not going to support the volume that Little Rock has clearly, but but they they've they've taken the approach that let's figure out how we're going to regulate this and and design our processes and our laws around that. One of the things I heard from both Hot Springs and Little Rock is that they do not plan on monitoring this themselves. They like we they wouldn't have anybody in the city that is going out and searching Airbnb or VRBO looking for people. They are going to, if it passes, they're going to contract with a technology company that would do the monitoring for them. And then they would provide data back to the city saying there these XYZ locations have short-term rentals in place, and then the city would then compare that to their records. See if they have a permit to operate and go forward. So I thought that was, you know, that was an interesting way of doing it because I don't think the city wants to be in the position of having to check a website daily and see what's come on and come off. So that's the that's the approach that they're taking. But, you know, in terms of where I stand on this, I kind of fall along the same lines as you. I I think that number on the capacity has to change. I just, I've told, I've mentioned the very first meeting, the time that I stayed in Airbnb, I it wouldn't have been allowed. There was more than eight. So I I think that number needs to be changed, and other cities have made that change before they will Fayetteville, before they adopted it, they they made that change. So that's kind of where I am on it. But I I just appreciate that other cities have taken a how are we going to do this and enforce it and then crafted things around that to make sure that they have processes in place first before passing the law and then trying to figure out how we're going to do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Tierney?
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. That was a very thorough report. Appreciate all the work and effort you've done on this. Obviously, this is an area that is going to be a growth area that is going to be affecting the cities all across the country. So I mean, if we need to at a later date, you know, with more information, make an adjustment or amendment to change that, you know, that may be a possibility down the road. I think, you know, right now, the this minute we have in front of us does three things. Two things is changing languages that we have in there. One, where right now the city is actually requiring everybody to register that they're renting out, which that is something we don't need to be doing. And then there's also some language that that definitely was out of step with the times that need to be adjusted and it cleaned up. And then, of course, you know, this is something with the capacity issue, it's something we do need to put something on there because as Chief Pickard testified, you know, they had problems once before with the huge crowd showing up and arrests having to be made. So, you know, this is something we do need to address. You know, if we made it need to make adjustments down the road, I'd be fine with that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mazoni?
Yeah, thanks, Ken. That was good because I I was kind of with Councilmember Mosley on this, just really unsure what what problem we are fixing and we're doing. My concern is not just the capacity, but it also, this is bringing up a lot more questions than it does answers. So right now we're going, well, this is capacity. So how about this? How about that? I think instead we need to go back, regroup, see what everyone does, follow on the on the research you have and come back with a better answer rather than amend it later, come up with what we think is the best one. I I have I've I've looked at this many different ways. It's confused me more than it has it. So glad you asked. I was going to ask something similar. That that's just my concern, to make sure that that we have less unknowns than we have more unknowns.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Holt?
I'm like the other councilmen are, I have no objection to this because I know absolutely nothing about it. And that may be, as has already been said, it's not a matter of what we do know, it's a matter of what we don't know. The only concern that I have thought about. I mentioned at another meeting that I had people that came in, they came into Little Rock and they from here Tennessee and left the next morning, and they got one of the homes that they rented on Tyler Street in Little Rock. The lady belongs to whatever, some kind of an organization where she she rates the house when they leave and the people who have the home rate them also. So they can be on a bad list if they go in have a bad situation, I guess. I I don't know. I mean, I didn't discuss it with them really. But personal logics, it isn't a group of somebody that wants to have a big party that night and whatever. So, you know, things like that, like you say. What do we, what do we don't know? But I I I don't think it's going to be a common big industry here in Mammell, but I I would probably vote yes if me, too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Shin?
I just want to point out that the one down the block from me has been occupied for the entire month. It's not available a single weekend through the summer. So it's a hotter issue than most folks think it is for Mammell because we're not a destination. There's folks who want to stay here. So I've got no problem with making any adjustments. I would like to have the best thing we could, but I don't want to see us put it off too long because then we wind up chasing a car again, which we've got a reputation for. That's my only concern.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Williams?
I just think we should not be the city that blazes this trail. I think we should follow after what other cities do. As far as enforcing this goes, because we just don't have the market these other larger cities have. I just think we need to back up, look at it. I don't agree with the capacity either, but I think we're kind of jumping ahead of the game here. It needs to be looked at a little bit longer, a little bit more thoroughly before we we fire off. Just, um, I think it's just we're just too ahead of the game right now. And, you know, I like being a trailblazer. Don't get me wrong, but I like being a trailblazer with all of the information.
Thank you. Ma'am, Councilmember Gardner?
I guess just a question for the City Attorney. I know there's been concerns about disturbances and various things. Do we not have any other laws on the book for public disturbance, disorderly conduct that could be used if there is an issue?
Disorderly conduct is a specific statute that requires certain things that take place like outside or in public areas, certainly in the public areas. So disorderly conduct normally wouldn't apply, and there could be a situation where somebody could be outside and they could be acting up and possibility, but it's difficult when you have someone who's renting out a house. You know, or you don't know all the circumstances around that rental in that situation, and they're just having a big party in a residential area and they have fifty people there. We we don't search warrant for that, so we can't, you know, go in the house. So there have been issues and, you know, you all mentioned the one event that Chief Picker kind of spoke about. There have been multiple things, not a one-time thing. And, you know, I've seen even recently on social media, somebody, you know, a house that's pretty poor, own in a very nice neighborhood where they're talking about hey, would you rent that out for a private party? We could charge ten or fifteen dollars. You know, there are obviously some code enforcement issues with that. But it it's difficult to track when you don't have any kind of knowledge. Database of this this house is an Airbnb or this house is open for that type of thing. You know, wedding venues and things, that's become very popular, very popular thing to to do, to have to rent out like a very large home for an event like that that has a nice backyard or something like that. You know, I don't think it's fair to the people who invested in a home in Osage Falls or Mammell Valley or wherever, and, you know, they have this lovely home in a residential area that they, you know, believed that to be just for residential use to then have those events going on next door to them, you know, on just an average weekend or whatever. So I guess that that is my biggest concern about any of this. It's not so much, you know, a family coming and staying and having two cars there. It's it's the events and and those do occur, and I think that's something that's going to grow if it's not addressed.
Thank you. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I I have to agree with Madam City Attorney. I'm really concerned about neighbors to these properties because they have property rights and and they purchase their properties with an inborn sense that that they're going to be safe and uninterrupted in their lifestyle. And that we we might be putting that in jeopardy. I have to agree with other comments that I've heard. I have some real concerns that we are voting on an ordinance and I and I've heard more than once, just in the last few minutes, that we can always come back and change it in the future. Well, if you adopt that attitude, then every ordinance that we vote on, we should vote yes because we can change any ordinance in the future that we want. So that is not a good argument in my mind. I would rather vote yes if we vote on this sort of ordinance. I would rather vote on one that is clean, that is well thought out and well supported before I could vote yes on it. And I don't feel like we had that at this time. So, of course, I'll you can tell I'll be voting no on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance ten twenty-nine? All right, Madam City Clerk, if you could do a roll call vote, please. And again, the motion is to adopt ordinance ten twenty-nine.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Saunders?
No.
Councilmember Mazoni? Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Tierney? Councilmember Shin? Councilmember Holt?
No.
Ordinance fails or motion fails? Which brings us to the third reading of ordinance ten thirty, amending the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten thirty and ordinance amending a section of the Mammell City Code to expand the allowance for private city streets and for other purposes.
All right. This is on third reading, pretty basic. It just removes the requirement or the prohibition on or the requirement that private streets can only be cul-de-sac or short-loop streets. If there's any discussion now is a good time. If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance ten thirty. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Mosley?
I just wanted to ask the City Attorney if she saw any downside from a legal standpoint or the ability for a neighborhood to perhaps when that when this is put together to to have a maintenance of the private road.
I guess, you know, the downside is that they're going to be responsible for that either through some type of special improvement district if they if the developer decides to try to put something like that in place or the Property Owners Association. We have taken the position, I think we're moving in the direction of at least requiring that there be a Property Owners Association set up through the Bill of Assurance, which we haven't always had. But I mean, obviously, we've seen some situations where property owners associations don't function that well, and then we end up with streets that do fall into disrepair, and I don't know that we can guarantee that will not ever happen again. So that is that is the downside.
Do you do you feel like at the planning stage, we can refuse refuse that if if you don't see an adequate ability to do maintenance? Can the can the city planners feel comfortable in saying, no, you haven't provided for that?
Well, at the final plat stage, the Bill of Assurance is to be reviewed to make sure that there's a mechanism in place. As to whether that mechanism is going to function perfectly in fifty years, I don't know. But I mean, they can, they can certainly say your Bill of Assurance doesn't require or doesn't include an adequate mechanism for future maintenance and have them address that.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional discussion? If not, we've got a motion second to approve ordinance ten thirty. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Tierney? Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes, ordinance ten thirty is adopted, which brings us to the second reading of ordinance ten thirty-one. And then regarding the referendum process, Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten thirty-one and ordinance revising sections of the Mammell City Code regarding the initiative and referendum process and for other purposes.
All right, this item is on second reading. If there's no discussion, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm going to I'm going to bring up this. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up this again. I've, I've looked at this harder and I've had some conversations with the city attorney. And I've read the state constitution that's referenced in this. And, and again, I think, I think we need to take a look at making a change on this. Basically, this, this ordinance has two components. As far as, and I, I'll probably get tangled up here because there's so much going on. But the, there's two components. One is we're saying how many, what, what number of signatures we have to have to have a referendum and an initiative. And then we're also saying what amount of time you have to gather the signatures. Now, the, from what I understand, we're talking to the city attorney is, is that this, where our current code conflicts is strictly on the number of signatures that are required to get something on an initiative or referendum. So, so basically, we do have to go with the constitution and put in, put in, it has to be based on the number of votes in a mayoral, the most recent mayoral election. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's contained in the current provisions of.
So in this, in this case, that would be putting it in, in, putting our code in compliance. Now, the other item is the amount of time. Now, in the old ordinance, the way it is here, it was in compliance with the state constitution granting 30 days, not, not less than 30 days and not more than 90 days. And that was in compliance. But from what I understand, when this ordinance was written, the mayor in sponsoring this, put in 30 days to limit the amount of time for people to gather signatures. And I, I wanted to mention too, I thought about this. We're here, we're representing our constituents. We're, we're, we're standing up for the residents of our community. There is checks and balances in government. And this is, this is one of the checks and balances is to be able to do a referendum by the residents or an initiative. And I think we need to give, when, when something comes up that is that concerning to the residents, that they want to do a referendum or a initiative, we need to make sure that there's, there's a rational amount of time for them to get that done. 30 days, I don't think is anywhere close to that. There's a lot of things that has to go into even getting a petition prepared and, and rounding up people and that sort of thing. That if it's based on a mayoral race, you might have to have 1,400 signatures. So 30 days basically makes a referendum impossible with 30 days. So, Mr. Mayor, do you, do you have some reason why you made that 30 days? Or are you open to making 90?
I didn't make it 30. It's been, the city's position since its formation has been that it's 30 days. And I'll let the city attorney opine on the inconsistency, I believe. Well, I'll, I'll just call on the city attorney and then chime in if she doesn't.
So while the, the, there are two different, the problem is there are two different timetables. And so our, our code is inconsistent with itself.
Right.
We have one section that says for a referendum petition, it has to be filed not less than 30 or more than 90 after passage. And then we have in 2-142, it limited to 30 days. So the, the 30 days, I will say, is, was specifically passed by an ordinance intentionally directed at that provision. The six, the 30 to 90, as I understand it, became part of our code as we adopted a code as a whole. And I don't know if it was ever specifically considered just for that particular thing. But nevertheless, we wind up with these two inconsistent provisions. So I think when the mayor says that he understood it to be 30, the, since the specific provision had been 30, a lot of people thought it was 30 and, and never really knew that the 30 to 90 was also contained in the prior section. And, you know, it had been, it had been 30 before the 30 to 90 was included as an addition.
So the 30 to 90 was the latest thing?
The 30 to 90 was passed after, after the 30 day provision, but the 30 days never came out of our code, was never intentionally.
Oh, well, in that case, I, I really think it'd be more logical to go with the latest adoption than the 30 to 90 would be the, the latest thing. So again, I'm going to go ahead and make a, a motion to, to change, change that second to last sentence in that first page to 90 days instead of 30 days. I hereby make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we do have a motion to amend section one, changing the referendum period from 30 days to 90 days. And a motion and a second on that. And then just to comment, so just so that everyone's clear about what we're talking about. There was an ordinance passed, ordinance 51 in 1986, that set the referendum period to 30 days. Somewhere between 1986 and today, the city code has a section in it that refers to 30 to 90 days. I think what the city attorney has figured out or the conclusion that we've come to is in one of those ordinances where we adopted the city code as a whole, that maybe the codifiers put in a form, boilerplate language, that, that changed it from 30 to 90. So whether we want to set it to 30 or 90 or somewhere in between is not something I'm deathly passionate about either way, except that referendum period is also the period in which we have to wait before an ordinance takes effect. So once this council passes an ordinance, when does it go into effect? It goes into effect at the end of the referendum period, which is under ordinance 51, set to 30 days. And then according to miscellaneous unknown ordinance, it's the 30 to 90 days. So just make sure that when we're, it's, it's, I think you're only looking at half of the equation if you're looking at the referendum period, right? Which is the amount of time the public can go get signatures to either, to, to basically overturn ordinance. The other part is when that ordinance goes into effect, and they're both, they're, they're the same equation, if you will. Councilmember Gardner?
You just answered this question. I just wanted to clarify then, because I asked this last time. So if we were to adopt the change to 90, like you said, that's going to cause all ordinances that we pass to take 90 days to go into effect. So as you mentioned in the previous meeting, we might be asked for more emergency clauses in certain situations to enact it immediately. So I, I guess I had that question again, because I didn't see that in this particular section of code. But I'm guessing there's another section of code that ties this together?
Provision.
Okay, okay. So if the motion to amend passes, we're looking at 90 plus, 90 days before change is going to affect on anything, right?
Unless there's an emergency.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember, someone just removed it, Mosley?
I was going to say, you're not going to have this on every ordinance that's passed. It's going to have to be something very controversial, because I don't, I don't think there's ever been one done. But I'm just saying, they need 90 days. So, so it's not going to happen all the time. But anyway, thank you.
I'll tell you, we're probably doing something very wrong if every ordinance goes to referendum. Madam City Attorney?
I did also want to point out, and I think I mentioned this last time, but there was a state statute passed setting the time for local referendum at 60 days. Then the court in 2017 ruled that the legislature did not have the authority to do that. It's however, still on the books. So, I mean, it, it, it's something to consider, I guess, whether the city wants to comply with that statute, although the court has said it is unconstitutional.
Well, it, it wouldn't be unconstitutional for us to set it to 60 days.
The city has, the, the state legislature can't tell us we have to do it at 60 days. That's what they said was unconstitutional. The, the city has the, the right to set it at any time between 30 and 90 days. So if the city wanted to choose 60 days, that's certainly within the city's discretion. However, there is also a statute on the books saying that it should be 60 days. Correct.
Councilmember Holt?
I, I agree, the, the 30 days is almost an impossibility to go out and cover a city of our size and, and gather, walk, walk, walk and get the signatures. That's, that's just really beyond any logic. I don't believe, any of us believe that a referendum could be collected with 12, 13, 1400 signatures in 30 days without quitting your job and working eight hours a day to go get them. I also believe as councilmember, Steve Mosley said, sorry, Steve. I get blank spots, that, that, you know, we, we just are here for the, for our people that elected us to represent them. We have to vote sometimes for things that we don't like. But if that's what the people want, unless there's some, you know, really bizarre issue where endangered people are socially be inappropriate or whatever, but we have to support them and, and give the people time to at least have their voices heard in whatever the issue is. So I, I just believe that the 30 day thing is, is really cutting it sharp to where it makes it almost impossible for anyone. If the people want to override the ordinance, they should have that opportunity to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Williams?
I think I agree too, that 30 days is a little too short to gather signatures for a referendum. My problem is the 90 days for our ordinances to, to, to be enacted. I, I think that's going to bog us down, just, I mean, we're going to just stop at a dead crawl, waiting for 90 days for anything that we decide to go, to be enacted. So my question is, and this may be the dumbest question you've ever heard, is there any way we can separate the two?
No, and that is the state law provision that your, your ordinances go into effect at the end of your referendum period. And the reason is that otherwise you have a referendum or potentially on a law that's already gone into effect. So, and there could be times when you couldn't make a change because something had already gone into effect and happened, you couldn't unring that bell.
Councilmember Gardner?
Councilmember Williams, I'm glad you asked that, because I was going to ask that too. So in that way, you got it out and I didn't have to ask that. I mean, yeah. Yeah. I would be all for giving 90 days for a referendum, but to wait three months for anything to go into effect, that's, that's the problem that I have. I wish we could separate it, but I understand why we can't, but.
Are there exceptions to that, a little other than the hard to call? Could we, could we make a motion here in those times to enact something maybe in 60 days rather than that? Could we do something like that with their provision? Am I saying that?
Madam City Attorney?
I think you could include within the body of the ordinance that, that you wanted it to become effective on a date certain that was different than the date of passage. And I, I don't see why you could, I don't, do you know of any reason why you could not do that?
I know you can extend it beyond, you could have it not go into effect until January 1, 2022. I don't know if the ordinance can shorten that without a declaration of an emergency.
I'm sorry, that's, excuse me, that is what I, that's what I was referring to. If you wanted it to be longer, I don't, I don't think you can do it. Because again, you run into that, the referendum, you know, you have to have the right to go ahead with the referendum and to make a meaningful change. So if it had already become effective, that could be an issue.
Thank you. And I, I want to be crystal clear. I don't think it's the end of the world if ordinances don't go into effect for 90 days. That is not the end of the world for the majority of issues. It just, it's something to consider, especially because we're one of the cities that goes through all three readings, which means if we have an ordinance going into effect, we're really talking 90 days plus another 35, 40 days, depending on what month it is and how the meetings are lining up. That's turning, getting an ordinance passed into a four or five month, three to five month process. Just something to think about. With that, if there is no further discussion, I have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 1031 to change the, change it to a 90 day, not 30 day referendum. Is anyone confused about the motion? All right, all those in favor of making the change, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no?
No.
Could you do a roll call, sir?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Mazzone?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
So we have four to four, and I elect not to vote on this. So we have ordinance 1031. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance 1031? Councilmember Mazzone?
Yeah, a lot of us are agreeing that 30 days is too short, so it looks like 90 days is too long. So I'm going to try and go with the Goldilocks, go with the state of 60 days. So I make a motion, we change it from 30 days to 60 days.
I've got a motion and a second to amend it from 30 days to 60 days. Any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor of changing it to 60 days, say yes.
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 All, all opposed, say no?
No.
Roll call again, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazzone?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Shin? Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. It is amended from 30 to 60 days. And with that, I'm assuming this is a material change requiring it to go back to first reading. Madam City Attorney?
Since this is the heart of the ordinance, I would agree with that.
All right, absent objection, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read this for the first time. Any objections? Speak now and forever hold your peace. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read ordinance 1031 as amended for the first time?
It enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1031, and ordinance revising sections of the Mammell City Code regarding the initiative and referendum process and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. Absent any other discussion, councilmember Mosley?
No, no more discussion here.
Did, did you hit your button to say you didn't?
Second reading.
Okay, absent any other discussion, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Next item of business is the second reading of ordinance 1032 regarding building and bills of assurance. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
It enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1032, and ordinance amending section 14-40 of the Mammell City Code to remove city enforcement of private bills of assurance for aesthetic purposes and for other purposes.
All right. This is on second reading. If there's no discussion, it will be on third reading at the next council meeting. Councilmember Mosley?
I am sorry to be the only one doing this, but on this one here, I get to thinking about this more. We've, we've made sure that, that before issuing a building permit that we're in compliance with the private bill of assurance. And I think the, did, did not the state legislator, legislature, they passed a law saying we cannot, we cannot deny somebody something based on exterior walls, architectural things and that sort of thing. deny somebody something based on exterior walls, uh, architectural things and that sort of thing. But there's, what about, uh, what about things like, uh, house size? Uh, you could have, say, a house burns down in, uh, Osage Falls and the, the house is cleared and somebody buys the lot and wants to build a two thousand square foot house there, whereas a bill of assurance probably says it's got to be thirty-five hundred or something like that, something that's and saying no garage or something like that. So is, are we not opening ourselves up to some, some really more than just cosmetics or aesthetics?
Madam City Attorney.
I'm going to bring up the code section that's the Arkansas. Sorry, just take me a second.
And just, uh,
things we're not supposed to be regulating for. Okay. And it, it does not mean again that it's not enforceable from, by the property owners association. So I mean, it says municipality shall not regulate residential building design elements as used in this section. Residential building design elements means A, exterior building color, B, type or style of exterior cladding material, C, styler materials of roof structures, roof pitches or porches, D, exterior non-structural architectural ornamentation, E, location design placement or architectural styling of windows and doors, including garage doors and garage structures, F, the number and types of rooms, G, the interior layout of rooms, and H, the minimum square footage of a structure.
So that we, we cannot regulate the internal square footage.
So yeah, that, that would be perfectly legitimate for a bill of assurance. And the property, property owners association is still responsible for, um, enforcing that. But the city should not be conditioning our building permits on, um, on those items.
Okay. Foundation.
I don't see where it says.
Setback.
Foundation setback is different. It's not, setback's not included.
Okay.
Um, I don't see it. Well, you know, foundation's going to be regulated by building regulations. It's not going to be subject to a bill assurance. And that's not, it's not a design element. That's going to be in the, the model code for the state of Arkansas that we use to consider building safety requirements.
But we're absolutely sure that we cannot regulate by square footage in certain neighborhoods.
Well, it should not be, um, a, as I read the statute, that's one of the items that we should not be regulating.
Okay. Got to stay rip in the presence. If we're wrong, I'm sure he'll pop up and tell us, but I know he knows that in full detail. So, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
It was two thousand nineteen. We're going to test your memory.
And there has, there has been a, a push by the legislature recently to strip away some of those authorities that the local governments used to have that they're removing. Also, there's still some of these things that we, that we do address. We, we're just not addressing them through, uh, w- w- we're not enforcing the bill of assurances, which is a se- effectively and essentially a contract between two private parties. Um, and so there might be some question as to whether the city should be enforcing and either approving or denying permits based on a private contractual relationship between private partners anyway. That, that P O A or, or whoever it is still has the authority to, uh, enforce that. And civilly.
Thanks for the clarifications. I appreciate it.
Is there any additional discussion on ordinance ten thirty-two? Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. We will move on to new business. The first item of new business is the first reading of ordinance ten thirty-three amending, uh, the land use map. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the city council of the city of Mammell County, Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten thirty-three and ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map and for other purposes.
All right, so this is for, um, the, if you all have seen, um, the, it is basically the corner lot at Carnahan in Club Manor. It fronts, um, Club Manor uh, a little bit there. Madam City Clerk, are you able to, uh, zoom in on that a little bit? Uh, when Carnahan Village, uh, or when the Carnahan Village subdivision came through originally, they left that part, uh, commercial. Um, and it is, uh, and then they, they did the single family residential, which has sold like hotcakes out there, uh, and I think is completely built out. There might be one or two, uh, lots or homes being built. I'm not quite sure. We do have a representative while we have the owner, uh, Daryl Brock is here if anyone has any questions. And of course, uh, Mr. Grummer is here to answer any questions from the planning side. Got you yet. So I'll go ahead and open that up for discussion if anyone has anything. Council member Mosley.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Grummer a couple of questions, please.
Mr. Grummer, come on down.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, what all can be built in the current land use and, and zoning, which I guess is, uh, institutional and P C D. Uh, can any type of residential be built there? Is it just, uh, what is institutional in fact? What, what would be under institutional?
Well, uh, city hall, city, uh, facilities such as that, um, public schools per se, the, uh, uh, P C D does not allow for residential use. It allows for, uh, a mixture of commercial uh, type C one and C two, as well as a mixture of, uh, light industrial.
Okay, okay. So basically is it zoned now? There's no, no residential whatsoever?
Uh, the way it's zoned right now, no.
Okay. And if it is rezoned, it, I think I saw somewhere they were talking about townhomes. Is, is that correct? Is that what we're kind of looking at?
On, on the rezoning one, uh, I believe they had mentioned that, of course, this is the land use and, uh, staff does actually uh, support the change from, uh, institutional to commercial because this is a town center district and commercial is more appropriate for the, for the site.
Okay, okay. So what we're looking at would be under that, under that new commercial, it would be, uh, oh gosh, what would it be? C two, is that what we're looking at?
Well, that's the zoning. So, um, the land, the land use would go from, uh, I N S T institutional to, uh, C O M L commercial.
Okay, okay.
So basically it'd be saying that we're, uh,
Still commercial.
Still commercial, but of course, within that commercial designation, the zoning can be, uh, P C D or C two, uh, or C three or C one.
Okay. All right. Well, that answers my questions on this one. I guess the zoning perhaps, uh, bef- should I wait on that? Or would you rather get into both of those at the same time?
I'd recommend just go, uh, cover your ears, madam city attorney. I, I'd recommend just, just talking about it right now, as, as long as we're kind of distinguishing between the two.
Okay, okay. Well, the zoning then, if we change the zoning to what's requested, the combination would then allow townhomes. Is that correct?
So the C two, uh, zoning category allows for, uh, an R three residential component by right. Um, and so the density would be in, uh, sixteen, uh, up to thirty-five units per acre, uh, for R three residential.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty, it's pretty, uh, tight there. Okay, I guess my biggest concern is, again, we'd be giving up, uh, um, commercial property for perhaps residential. So it's kind of goes back to my same deal from the week before. So I'm probably going to be a no vote on, on both of those, but, uh, sure be open to any other discussion. Anybody else got some ideas or convince me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. I would chime, uh, I, I'll chime in here a little bit and say this is, in my opinion, a little bit different than what we just had. I think, I think if you're looking at rezoning away, something that is, um, uh, currently not set to allow, uh, residential. Uh, when you look at that area, maybe as compared to the other area, and by that I'm referring to, um, where the, uh, off of commerce, maybe the, the question then that I look at is, well, has, has this area changed in the same way that we think that other area did? Uh, and we can discuss that and, and go on with it, but, you know, I think there's different factors there. Um, next up is, uh, did someone have their button? Like, like there was four buttons clicked and they're all gone now?
Uh, okay. Just something we might ought to look at type one to log this when we look at the changes and
Well, um, so I had a, a, a conversation with, um, um, Mr. Brock and he chose this, he chose to go to C two based on a basic, my understanding is he came to planning and said, what is the zoning that allows me to, uh, put in townhomes? And then based on recommendations from staff, it was recommended for C two. Um, I, my conversation was with him was he's been pretty clear up from the beginning as to what he wanted to do and he chose to go C two based on, on, um, staff's assessment that this would be a good zoning for what you're trying to do. Uh, and so to get midway through this process and then table it while we change that seems, um, uh, I, I, I don't like doing that. Uh, we could debate whether or not it should go forward, but to kind of have him rely on the city and then change the game midway through. I, I wouldn't recommend tabling this until that point. But I think that, um, uh, it should be considered that the intent is to put some townhomes there. And, uh, Mr. Brock, if you have anything to add, you're welcome to it. You're fine sitting back there. But if I say something that's incorrect, uh, feel free to come on down. Okay, thank you. So far, give me time and I'll say something else. Council member Gardner?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I listened to the conversation that the planning commission had about this, uh, and, and I believe Mr. Brock mentioned there, he's tried to market this commercial for a number of years and did not have any success or any buyers and, and came in with lower prices to try to attract commercial and still no buyers. And then, you know, in terms of building townhomes there, you know, when you think, this lot is relatively small. Uh, and so while it does allow for that R three multifamily type situation with the townhomes, um, it's still a relatively small lot. So, uh, yeah, that doesn't concern me a- as far as packing hundreds in there because it's not going to, it's not going to happen. It, it, it wouldn't be allowed to fit into that space. So I just want to throw that out there. That's, you know, we're not talking about a large area here of, you know, being able to do a lot with in terms of the number of apartments or town, or townhomes that are planned.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on ordinance ten thirty-three at this time? Council member Mosley.
As far as you, you'd suggested, we kind of look at it as what has changed in the area. I would say things in this area have changed probably less than say that in the area that we're looking at that was, uh, Mr. Pfeiffer's property. Um, that was a closer call on that one there because things have changed to where, where it's, that's not a, not a good, uh, location traffic wise and everything else for, uh, commercial, but yet, uh, Club Manor still is kind of, that's a commercial corridor there. So I would say nothing probably changed there as far as my opinion goes at this point. I'll certainly keep my mind open the next couple of minutes.
So one of the things that I would, the point I was trying to make, and I think I did a poor job, uh, as I was trying to dance around certain things, uh, the, the, um, Mr. Pfeiffer's property, in my opinion, we saw that retail was moving away and commercial was moving away from that region. You had, uh, the area that was the Kroger that was now no longer a, a Kroger. The banks were turning into insurance agencies. Um, the commercial hub of Mammell moved, um, a bit. And we kind of said, well, let's see, it's moving to town center, um, which is this vicinity. It's moving to, as we're hoping to, uh, revitalize east, uh, or north Mammell, uh, near forty and then hope to get something going in, uh, east Mammell at the third interchange, uh, commercially. Um, and, and this area, in my opinion, doesn't have that same factor. There may be some other factors. One thing that I know has changed is all the area behind it went to single family residential, nice homes that sold fast. You're going to get, you know, you have more residential now right next to there that wasn't there, uh, previously. I do know that, um, the city council appropriated some funds this year for some planning in the street side of things. Um, and we are currently, uh, in negotiations with a consultant to do a, a case study, uh, on a bike head, bike and bicycle and pedestrian plan using the Club Manor corridor as our case study. Uh, where they're going to look at, um, uh, walkability in that area. Uh, hopefully figuring out a way we could tie it to that regional bike bicycle trail that we were hoping uh, goes down through Mammell, uh, eventually leading from Little Rock to Conway and other areas. Uh, and so we're, we are looking at that area actively. Um, I had emails back forth with consultants on that. So, yeah, just, just things to take into consideration there.
Thank you.
I was seeing any additional comments. Seeing none, this will be on the second reading at the next city council meeting, uh, which brings us to the first reading of ordinance ten thirty-four amending the current zoning map. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the city council of the city of Mammell County, Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten thirty-four and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Thank you. And this, uh, amends the zoning from, um, P C D planned commercial district to C two town center. And is the companion to what we were just discussing. Is there any discussion on ordinance ten thirty-four? Madam City Attorney?
I would just, as we've mentioned, um, before, when looking at zoning ordinances, the code does say that they may be changed, that the zoning may be changed. Um, whenever the public necessity and general welfare requires such amendment. So again, if you are planning to vote uh, in favor of changing this zoning, please also, uh, plan to state why you believe that it is in the public necessity and general welfare to make the change.
Thank you. Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, this will be on the second reading at the next city council meeting, which brings us to our final item of new business, resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, approving preliminary development plan. Madam City Clerk, treasures, if you please read that by title only.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell County, Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to the entitled resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven, approving the preliminary development plan for Harris addition.
Thank you. Harris addition is of course the area thereof commerce drive that was rezoned from C three to P R D, uh, recently, and this is the preliminary development, excuse me, preliminary development plan, um, that went through the planning commission. I'll open this up for discussion. Or if it'd be helpful, we can bring someone up to explain what's going on here. If there is no discussion, I entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven. I've got a motion second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven. I do have the, uh, applicant, Mr. Ron Harris here, as well as Mr. Grummer, if anyone has any discussion. Um, going once, going twice, discussion, discussion. Seeing none, madams, all those in favor approving resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes. Pardon me? You were voting for John. I was like, what did we do? So I apologize for that, uh, council member Shin. We will absolutely get that amended. Uh, and just to clarify, that was a, a vote and affirmative for council member Shin. All right, we will move on. Uh, that concludes new business. We'll move on to mayor's comments and you're safe from me. So we'll go to council member comments. Madam City Attorney.
No comments.
Madam City Clerk.
Why, yes, I do. I'll be quick, guys. Don't worry. I need a liaison for June. Shoot me an email. Think about it.
For the planning.
For the planning commission. For the planning commission. And then also I wanted to give everybody, uh, notice that we do have an opening on the facilities board for a five-year term. I will be accepting applications until, um, gracious, I didn't write that down.
Later.
For at least four weeks. I could, I could send that out. And that term will expire in May twenty twenty-six. So there's an opening on the facilities board. If you know of anybody who's interested, have them port me over their, uh, resume. And then also if you guys can send me an email if you're available for June, that's all I have.
Outstanding, just to point out a few proclamations, uh, Municipal Clerks Week, yay, Madam City Clerk. Um, Economic Development Week proclamation, yay, um, Mrs. Keller. Uh, and we hope to have some, uh, exciting stuff, uh, next week for that. Um, and then, of course, declaring two days ago as, uh, five oh one day in the City of Mammell. Uh, and with that, I would enter, entertain a motion to adjourn. I had a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no? Thank you very much.